Counselor Dalgert, we are live, so you can call the meeting to order when you're ready. We seem to have lost Counselor Dalgert, so we're just on pause here until our chair comes back.
Okay.
It's locked down here.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, for sure. So Counselor Dalgert is having some IT problems, so Mayor Lowry, he's asked if you can open the meeting and chair until he gets sorted out again. You're on mute, Mayor Lowry?
Thank you very much, Jean. I'm just gonna pull the agenda back up here, if you give me a moment. Okay, so I'm calling the meeting to order, and I'll stay in the chair until we're able to have Counselor Dalgert take back over. So beginning with attendance, Madam Clerk?
We have all in attendance, Your Worship, and Counselor Dalgert will be joining when he gets his IT set back up.
Thanks, I think we've got a bit of a lag on the video here. So disclosure of pecuniary interest, excuse me, approval of the agenda is the next item, so we need a mover and seconder for the approval of the agenda. A few members could call out, please, as mover and seconder.
Counselor Maiden.
Thank you, Maiden.
Ferguson, move.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson. So not beginning then with John, since he's not with us. Hold on. My list of council members. All right, I'm hopefully not gonna miss any council members, I don't have the list in front of me here. Beginning then with Counselor Ferguson, in favor of approval of the agenda, yes or no?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Counselor Gerard?
Yes.
Counselor Maiden?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Minelli?
Yes.
I think that is everyone, one, two, three, four, five, yes? So the agenda is approved. And disclosure of the pecuniary interest or general nature thereof, if there is something in our discussions, you can make a statement when that item arrives for us, please do. And at this time, I will pass the meeting over to CEO Ken Kelly.
Hi, everybody, just going to share a screen here for a moment. Okay, so I'm hoping everybody can see a slide, so Strategic Plan Discussion, June 11, 2020, on that. Does that work for everybody? Okay, seen some nodding heads, that's great. Just trying to adjust the screen here as well. So I'm gonna go through probably about six slides, then what I'm going to do is bring up the actual document that was sent around, the strategic planning document, and you know, if, the idea here is hopefully a high-level discussion, like I said, we're trying to lead towards whether this is at a sufficient stage that you'd be comfortable with this going out for public consultation. I do think we're gonna have other, when it comes back again, opportunity to maybe wordsmith some of the project charters or whatnot, but what we're looking for is a high-level agreement in principle, that you're okay with this, not that you're approving this document here today, and that it's locked down, but basically that you are comfortable with what you're seeing so far, and we'll go and do some consultation on this. So with that, I'll take it to, I guess, a little reminder, or back a little bit, this is a one-year plan, and everybody should be somewhat familiar with this, in that this was given to you about, well, almost a year ago, about July, August of 2019, and this was a one-year plan that I had put together to, you know, at a high level again, try and give you an understanding of what I intended to do, or the progress that I was hoping to make in the first year. Where we are right now with regards to strategic direction, we're in about nine months, and you know, given things how they unfolded in COVID and whatnot, I think we're pretty much on track with this one-year plan in terms of where we wanted to be. You'll notice underneath that nine-month chevron, we have service deliver reviews, we have future projects defined, we have key planning documents defined, or processes initiated, such as a human resources corporate plan, an IT plan, an economic development plan, a comms plan, a facilities-based plan, an infrastructure hardening or an infrastructure plan. And just by the way, I mean, we see all of those things reflected, or some of those things reflected in the strategic planning document that you have before you, so you know, as we've worked along on this, I think that a lot of it is very much what one would expect to have seen from this organization over the past year. The next stage that we need to move in, like I said, once you do have the strategic plan approved, is to actually move towards implementation, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into these slides. Collage of ideas, so again, just want to take you to the process component of the document. This is what we started off with. You remember these sticky exercises, we went through several sessions of these, and it's interesting that, you know, once we put these ideas down on sticky notes, we moved them around, they actually started to take shape, they actually started to form into something that had maybe a little more meaning, as we started to guide the discussion, and we started to look for the trends and look for the commonalities, we started to see that there was some natural, I guess, alliance or natural groupings in people's thinking as we started to work through this. Again, this is just a snapshot of how we've moved along in the process. Where we are right now, we have 13 actions or deliverables that have been defined in those five themes in the document, and you know, this is all within the first couple of pages of the document, where we talk about process, vision, values, and these actual actions and deliverables. Just so you know, if you do count up the project charters in the document, there are 15 project charters, and that's because two of the action or deliverable areas had been split into two charters versus one, and you know, that is a little bit of personal choice on behalf of the project leaders, but also, you know, just trying to break things down, I think. So there's 15 of those project charters in the document in total. Wanted to touch upon the work plan that was in the document, and the reason that we put together this work plan is so that you can see in one page, in one simple table, one simple format, how all of these projects fit together, and in particular, what we're looking for here is timing issues. So do we actually need the output from one project to be finished and ready as the input for another project? And you know, that is, that's very key when we're looking at something taking place over, you know, one, two, three, and four years. I think it's okay if we were in a little bit shorter timelines, but this is important so that we align things that are going to take several months, such that they finish on time into what we need as an input for another project. So just very simply, back on this document, just to make sure everybody's clear in terms of what it means, when we're referencing winter, that means the end of March, spring is the end of June, summer is the end of September, fall is the end of December. So what we're doing, the level of accuracy here is, you know, within three months, and three months, yes, is a long time, but the purpose of that is to indicate that, you know, we're not trying to be so exact, or I guess overly confident that we can predict that a project is gonna end within a certain week, and it's two years from now. But what I want to do is be focused on, this is the rough timing that we're expecting this to be delivered, and does that rough timing work for us? So again, when I say, are you comfortable at a high level, are you comfortable at a high level getting this document within the winter or the fall, such that it fits into your thinking of when we need to have this output? You know, not, again, trying to be so overly confident that we can predict which day or week that it's gonna happen in, but just that it fits in with your comfort level of when these things should be delivered. So again, the work plan with those 13 actions and deliverables, we're looking, when you look at this chart, one of the other things that we are, you know, trying to take away from it, as much as when do things finish, but you'll notice that quarter one, 2021, almost every one of these projects is in action, and the first few quarters, the fourth quarter 2020, the first few quarters of 2021, staff are gonna be very busy on these projects. All of them are in some stage of activity, and that's a fairly good time for us, because budget hopefully has wound up, and you know, people can focus on these things, but by the time we get to Q3 in 2021, we need to be seeing some of these projects coming to a finality, wrapping up, because those inputs are gonna be needed into the last project, which is key to the strategic plan, which is a long-term financial plan. And so we are doing some work on that now, but a lot of the outputs from these projects are gonna be key for the long-term financial plan. So we're not expecting the long-term financial plan to be completed in 2020, it's a project that's going to be winding its way up, hopefully in Q3 2021, so that it informs the budget process for 2022 and going forward. So a little bit about process again, what I'm trying to get from you today is a green light to go out to the public with the content of the document. Now, the reason I say the content of the document is because, you know, even at the SMT meetings, we've had discussions about, this needs to be a little more polished, we need to do a few graphics, we need to put a little more around this document, so that it's a good public-facing document for the organization. What I've been focused on to date has been just the content. I want you to be comfortable with the wording, I want you to be comfortable with the direction. I don't want you to be, you know, put off by the wrong graphic we've put in, or the wrong choice in color, or anything like that, I want you really to be focused on the content. So that's the next stages. What we're hoping to do is maybe by the first week of July, to be putting this document out for consultation. Give people a good solid month to have it, it'll be on our websites, it'll be out for our content, we may actually do, you know, an attempt at a town hall, or some type of Zoom, or maybe an invited focus group of people to feed in, but we will be, I will be reaching out to certain groups, you know, maybe the business community and things like that, and some of our other associations, to get their feedback on this as part of this process. So there will be some, say, strategic outreach to groups to engage them. The general public will have access to the document, we can have printed copies here, if people don't have access to the internet and they want to get their hands on a printed copy, if people want to look at it online, it'll be available online, and they'll be able to email in or write in their comments to us. By the first week of August, we're hoping to wind that consultation period up, and take that analysis, that information in, do a little bit of analysis and summary on it, where do people think we've hit the mark, where do people think we're off-base, and bring that summary of content feedback to you on August 25. So we do have two meetings scheduled in August, but I'm gonna target the August 25 meeting as the meeting for bringing that back, in terms of process. So as much as I said that what we're looking for is your high-level okay to go down this, I do think there is one component here that will be worth us spending a little bit of time wordsmithing, and it follows along from our vision statement exercise a while back. So the last time we got together to discuss this, we came up with this vision statement, and really, we came up with, so we came up with this stage of the vision statement, which was your, you know, you sent me away as counsel, you sent me away with your conceptual statements of value, you sent me away to build one vision statement, and this is what I came back with. So you haven't had a chance as a counsel to, I guess, kind of hash this one out, or you know, to grind your teeth on this one, or whatever you want to say, but I did get a couple of comments back on the statement, and maybe what I'll do is I'll just go through those pieces, then I'll unmute everybody, and maybe we can go through, John, if that's okay with you, and have a little bit of an open discussion in terms of what the vision statement means, then we'll go into a stage of whether people have particular comments on the document as a whole, and like I said, hopefully moving to the point that you'll give me direction to go out and do consultation on this. So our vision statement, capitalizing on its natural assets, history, and people, Mississippi Mills will cultivate and balance employment, growth, and the environment to create a caring community for its residents, supported by open communication, integrity, and financial responsibility. Just so you know, some of the comments that have come back are, you know, can we put a comma after people, maybe, you know, the word cultivate, we can drop that, so cultivate and balance, and maybe we should look at replacing capitalization with a word like building. And I'll just give you one other example of how, one of the comments that came back, I just switched it around slightly. So this was another version in the comments that come back, and it's really focusing on capitalization was not, I guess, didn't sit well in terms of, is that really what we want to do? We want to capitalize on our natural assets. So really focusing more on, if we change it so that Mississippi Mills will cultivate and balance employment, growth, and the environment to create a caring community for its residents, supported by open communication, integrity, and financial responsibility, while capitalizing on its natural assets, history, and people. So that just switches the focus. So what I'm gonna do is, I'll take everybody off mute, and let's see if anybody has any comments about what they would, what they think this should be.
So just clarifying, do we have Counselor Dalgert on here at this point?
Yes, I'm back.
Oh, there you are. Did you want to take over chairing?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, it's up to you, I can do it, or you can do it?
All right, I'm good now, I got the internet again.
All right, I pass it back over to you then, Counselor.
And thank you.
Ken, you just want, you just want people to jump in here?
Yes, I've taken all of counsel off mute, so just so everybody's aware, everybody's off mute, so.
The only comment I have is, how do you cultivate employment?
I think we cultivate employment through our economic development strategy, so that's, you know, that's one component of our strategic plan. So what we're gonna try and do through the economic development plan and the development of that, is identify how we're going to do that. You know, are we going to, what role is the municipality gonna play in this as a facilitator? I mean, obviously, we are not going to create jobs, but we can create an environment, you know, a welcoming business environment, or a supportive business environment, which then will follow in terms of cultivating unemployment, so.
Good answer. This is the first time I've seen a second one, but I suggested the removal, or search of a comma after people in that first one Ken spoke about, but the second one, again, a comma after the environment, and I think the second one maybe reads a little better. Something like Ricky, cultivate, is that, I don't know, when I read cultivate, I take a different, I suppose, consideration to it, with the meaning of it, but if that's what fits in there, that would be all right, I guess, but it just, it sounds a little different, I think, that's all, something to get used to.
If, like, I do agree with you, Counselor Ferguson, I think the last version that I put up, which was a suggestion from a member of council, that starting off with Mississippi Mills, switching that focus from starting off with the capitalization piece, just putting it more towards the end, is a very good tweak on that. If we were to remove, we'll cultivate in that statement, so this is the last statement here, Mississippi Mills will balance employment, growth, and the environment, comma, to create a caring community for its residents, supported by open communication, integrity, and financial responsibility, while capitalizing on its natural assets, history, and people. That does shift the idea of economic development plan slightly, it does shift it. Watch your words. Like, if it cultivates, does to me insinuate that you're gonna try and be a facilitator? I think if we remove that, and you're balancing it, does it give it the same level of focus?
But cultivate then being replaced with facilitate, as you suggested.
Okay. Would you like me to maybe flip over to? What I'll do here, Counselor Ferguson? You can still see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Let's do a little bit of, on the fly here. And I'm just gonna blow this up a little bit, turn this button. How about that, Counselor Ferguson?
Addresses my concerns.
Any other members of council have any particular, strong objections, or strong agreement with any aspect of that vision statement as it is?
They have here, hi, I'm not a big supporter of the word open communication, because really, what does it mean? I can live with it, but I feel that maybe, like, something like an honest exchange of information, or something like open communication, what does it mean? You know, it's just a small thing, maybe, but I'm not a big fan of it.
Now, just where this comes from, is at our last session, we had our concept statements, so remember, live, work, play, and the environment, four concept statements, which are in the strategic plan document, and we had a couple of value words at the end, which were integrity, financial responsibility. Open communication was in there, but.
It's not huge for me, but it's just, I just, you know, lots of people say they've got open communication, but what does it mean?
How about, just trying to track a few things here? Okay, anybody else have any thoughts on any tweaks you might like to make to the statement?
Ken Maiden, I was okay with just balance, but I don't really like, no offense to Counselor Ferguson, I don't like the word facilitate, because it sounds to me too bureaucratic, and I'm thinking what it meant before was almost like nurture, and balance, employment growth, and the environment, but I'm okay with just balance, and not facilitator, cultivator, or whatever. We'll balance employment, growth, and so forth. And speaking as, an English major, I don't think we need a comma between environment and word two, because it's a preposition, but I stand to be corrected.
Okay. Just brought up the thesaurus on the side there, I don't know if people can see that, but I don't know if any of those other words, aid, assist, or smooth, might actually help us out here, or is the concept in and of itself not where you want it to be?
Is expedite on that, or sister?
Yes.
I don't know, if it works or not.
I think some of the residents might like that one.
Okay, but in that commitment, as we take this vision statement, and we try and drive it down, and we're using a word like expediate, accelerate, or advance, or further, that does insinuate, that is definitely more the facilitation, and it does mean that you're taking some ownership in terms of economic development, and I think pushing it forward, is that what you're hoping to articulate from here? Is that the intention, that you do want to roll in economic development?
Counselor Gerard? Sorry? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I was looking at the 2005, maybe official plan, and they used the word promote.
Okay, yeah. So that's, you know, the promotion role is maybe not as strong, Counselor Gerard, as taking on responsibility to push it forward, so that's a good balance as well?
I like that one.
Right. What about anybody else that sit well with the problems? Silence is agreement, so.
What about honest, support by honest exchange, is that assumed?
Well, what does that mean, Counselor Ferguson? You're at a good point when you're saying we're gonna do honest exchange, does that mean we've been dishonest to date? I was waiting for that one. But, yeah. You want that in there?
I don't think it adds a lot to it, but it's assumed, but support by exchange of information, I think.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, so do we have to qualify the exchange of information with that, or do we say, you know, a caring community for its residents, for its residents supported by? a caring community for its residents, uh, for its residents supported by exchanging information, integrity and financial responsibility? Like I said, again, what we're hoping to accomplish here today is agreement on, you know, eighty percent of what's there, such that you can go out to the public. So I, I think you want to have some of the right emphasis on the points that are most important to you. Do we have to have everything, you know, every high dotted, every T crossed? But maybe you'll hear something coming back from a public consultation that means you might want to adjust some of the the fluke or the emphasis. But there are certain things here that don't seem to be any problem for people, such as balance, employment, growth and the environment. Nobody seems to be objecting to any of that. Kind of our goal of a, of a caring community. Agreement, financial responsibility, I think those, you know, are not arguments for, for most people. And again, this seemed to be a key piece. One thing that I will say is it's been a little bit hard to try and incorporate in their heritage and the arts. And I don't know if, if, if you sufficiently captured heritage and within that public space for what it is for others. But I did, we do have that showing up in, we do have that reflected in, I believe it's the Community Services Project Charter. Do you have that idea of heritage and public arts reflected there?
So Mayor Lowry, if I can jump in?
Yes.
Yeah, for concerns, I think an umbrella word we could add into, into this statement while capitalizing on its natural assets, history, culture and people. Culture can encapsulate, I think, some of those, those pieces that you were referring to.
So culture and city history?
Sorry, history and culture, like including both, so there'd be four listed rather than three. Maybe the, the list is getting a bit long, but I think the culture piece would, would recognize heritage, would also recognize the arts component.
Has joined the meeting.
Uh, how about diverse people? Might be too much, but.
And we're still okay with this? No, I definitely don't like those words. Uh, Deputy Mayor Manili, did you want to say, and the diversity of its people?
Thought diverse, diversity of people as people, that's even better.
Okay, folks, is there anything else there that's jumping out at people that they think we should tweak? Okay. Hearing none, how about we park that for a minute? And we go to the overall, so I'm just gonna save that. And I'll go to the overall document here and just say, is there anybody that has any questions or, or comments on, you know, the, the summation or the sum total of what we have here, sixty-five pages of the strategic plan, which included all the project charters? I will say that the long-term financial plan, one needs a little bit of a tweaking. There was, I included a version that didn't have final comments in it, so we will see a little bit of a tweak in that one. But the timing, as it's included in the GAN chart and the table that's in the document is fine. Is there anybody else that has any items that they wanted to, to discuss?
I have two items, if it's reasonable.
Okay.
One, will there be an opportunity as moving forward to prioritize the actions and the deliverables? Because obviously there's a lot of work, it's an ambitious timeframe, I think, and obviously there should be some prioritization of those specific items for the staff to conduct. And then also, is there any duplication as it's moving forward in, that would impact the service line?
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson, I'll try and answer those, so I'll take the last one. Question first, and that was whether, whether we have a duplication of services? And I guess that's duplication with the service delivery review, right?
Yes, correct.
So I, I think for the most part, when we're looking through some of these things, we're capturing a lot of items that, that, that are necessary. Like I said, a lot of this is building towards key future-oriented planning documents that, you know, have, have a very long horizon. When we're talking about a transportation master plan update, master infrastructure projects, we're talking about a climate action plan, the OPA twenty-two amendment, a community safety plan, community services master plan. These are things that are going to be, let's say, they have more legs than service delivery. So service delivery view is focusing on how we deliver services, specifically delivering of services. You're looking to what's your performance, what's your cost structure? Are you using the right technology, those types of things? These are overall planning documents, which kind of point the way of where you're going to go. So for instance, economic development and a branding plan. That's not going to be impacting or duplicating what's going on in service delivery. In service delivery, we might be talking about how many people do we need? Are we getting the right performance or, or the right? Are we getting the right output or outcome that we're looking for? Same thing with the IT technology. Are we getting the same performance, the same objectives, the same goals? Is it working for us? The service delivery is more than likely going to point that we need to do an IT technology plan because we don't currently have one. So I think the service delivery view, it's only going to take a couple more months. And it's actually going to be informing some of these documents as opposed to duplicating. I can see some of the recommendations of a service delivery review pointing to the need for some of these documents, like an IT technology plan, like a community safety plan. The service delivery plan may also, service delivery view may also look at how we're organized as a structure. But I don't see it saying that a document like an official plan amendment is not necessary, or that the long-term financial plan is not necessary, or the branding strategy as part of economic development is not necessary. That's, that's kind of your, my answer to your service delivery question in terms of prioritization.
Appreciate that, yep, thank you, we just, we don't want to get into weeds on either one of them if there's gonna be duplication, but I agree with what you're saying.
Uh, in terms of prioritization, that really is the whole purpose of a GAN chart. And I do, I do appreciate that, it's a very simple GAN chart. And that's on page seven of sixty-five. And I can try and blow that up a little bit more if we wish here, I do have it on the screen. What we're trying to do here with that is is appreciate the level of work that's gonna happen. Say, you need to have Q one, Q two of twenty-twenty-one, where a lot of the work is going to be taking place. And we want to be cognizant of that. But within the project charters, you'll also notice that we've identified sections in there which are, who's gonna do this, is it internal or external? Is it consultants that are coming on board and maybe what a potential cost of those consultants would be? And again, what we're trying to do is recognize that if we're making commitments to deliver on this and we're making commitments to deliver on the time, we have to be aware of, of our actual ability. Do we have the resources to do that? So are you thinking, Counselor Ferguson, that some things may be a little more of a priority than others?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't get the last, did you, was that a question?
Yes, that you might, is there, is there something there that you think is more of a priority or a higher priority from your standpoint than other projects?
I, I don't, I don't really know, that was more of a generalized statement, but if I drilled down a bit more, I probably would come up with some ideas, but right now I'd say no, if it's at a high level. I just, I guess my concern is that we do have some prioritization, which would maybe give some staff relief as they're going through it, if they knew the type of priorities we had for each of their individual, I suppose, input into it.
And just one, I mean, one other kind of column I could put in that chart there, just to help you, or help illustrate your point, I think. If, you know, who's the actual project lead, who's actually responsible for that, or what department it's happening in? And, you know, that was in some of our earlier versions, you saw a name of who the project lead was. And for the most part, you know, we, we have project leads spread throughout the organization. You know, the first project, Community Services, is gonna be led by Recreation and, and Culture. The Community Safety Plan is coming out of the Fire Department. The OPA Amendment is, is coming out of Planning. And there's another sub-charter to that, which is Vitality. The Plan for Advocacy and Partnerships, that's my cell, and basically Mayor and Council. The Transportation Master Plan, Infrastructure Projects and Environment, that's coming out of Public Works. This goes to the area of, you know, corporate or admin. The HR Plan is admin. Communication Engagement is coming out of the Clerk's Office. Information Technology Plan is gonna be led by the Library. Economic Development and Branding is Tink T McLaren. And the Long-Term Financial Plan, of course, is financed, that's Treasury. So I think we spread them across the organization. One question that we do have to ask ourselves, Counselor, is, you know, again, a lot of this is gonna involve consultant dollars. And do we, do we want to be spending those dollars in that timeframe is kind of key as well.
Counselor Maiden here, I just wanted to make general comments on the, the whole thing as a whole. That's okay? I think we might have lost John, I'm not sure.
I'll check.
I'm still here, I'm here.
Okay. I really like the steering committees throughout, you know, I think we won on almost all of them except, you know, a couple, but composed of, you know, with councils on all of them, because the rule of council in the document is kind of not really well-defined, I didn't think. Deputy Mayor, for example, should be on the advocacy and the outreach with the greater community, like the, you know, Landmark Transportation and all that kind of stuff. And the advisory committees are completely left out of this, and I think as far as stakeholders go, they're pretty important. They've kind of been shut down a little bit, but I think their roles kind of would be important, working with and providing feedback to staff on various things. Depending on what committee on what, of course. The timelines are really good, and I support Counselor Ferguson with having council maybe tighten those up a little bit and prioritize them. I was really happy to see Christine step up on the digitization. Stuff, the library's done a lot of good stuff with that, and we've talked with the library board a little bit about maybe integrating services between the library and the municipality, I don't know if that's, you know, council would have to approve them, but. And what else do I have? Yeah, mostly, mostly that, I think there's gonna be a lot more discussion required on the official plan. The timelines for that, I think we're all kind of anxious to get going on it. And economic development, I think, really needs to be kind of dug into, but you know, there's a lot more could be said on that, I think, and that's all I had to say on it.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Maiden, I did take some notes on those things. And with regards to, to steering committees, yes, I mean, that was one of the things that was, that was highlighted as part of the development of each project charter, was, was a steering committee necessary, how would that? And, and how would that role be accomplished? And so, yes, I mean, for the most part, we've tried to integrate, you know, council in, in part of that, and it's always good to have, you know, council as a sounding board, council as a steering committee on these pieces, so we have really tried to create steering committees throughout the project charters. Again, I think the individual project charters, you know, they're gonna be gone over, I think, with a finer tooth comb, now that you've had some time to sit with them and things like that. Advisory committees generally is part of the stakeholder group. Most of the project charters did include a, an aspect of public consultation. And within the public consultation, like without trying to write a, you know, a, a really long project charter, what we were trying to do is just give you enough information that you could, that you could agree with the concept and agree with the direction that it was taking, such that, again, you could give it sanction to go out to public consultation. I do think that there is, and you know, some, some project charters are at a deep, more detailed level than others. And, you know, that was a little bit of personal choice on behalf of the, the project leaders. But for the most part, I think we've given you enough, enough detail that you can see where it's going and also see what maybe what it's not, where it's not going or what it's not going to be. And I think that's the important thing, you know, agreement at a high level, that, yes, this is where we want to see this going. I am, I am a little bit concerned, and I'm not saying this in, in respect to Counselor Maiden's comments, but just in general, if we do spend a great deal of time wordsmithing the project charters before we put this out for consultation, then we are gonna spend a lot more time, you know, kind of internally focused, when really we should be getting this out to the public to get their, their feedback.
Counselor Doge, just a comment here as well. I'm looking at Official Plan Twenty-two and not so much wordsmithing, but I'm just wondering if in the next week or so, we as a council could spend an hour or two on this. Just looking at timelines, if there's any way we can tighten up the timelines and maybe knock two or three months off this thing as possible. I know we're not gonna get into, into the detail of this stuff today, so I'm just wondering if it would be advantageous to spend an hour or two on this as a council in the next week?
Uh, just so you know, I mean, that, that project has, has started. I mean, that was something that, it's a piece of work that's deep, and yes, it is strategic, but it is, is necessary. We do have it in here because it does need that, that profile. And it does need, it is a component that feeds into other aspects of, of what we're doing. But just so you know, the, the work has started internally on this and discussions are going on with, with the county and others about how this project should unfold. So this is very much a project that is, is seeing activity right now. The director, I don't know.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, just fine.
Thank you, so through the chair, I understand council's eagerness to see the OPA twenty-two come to a conclusion as quickly as possible. This is a statutory process that is heavily, heavily regulated through multiple levels of government. There is a timeline and procedure that must be followed. I did produce a project timeline that I don't know whether or not Cao Kelly has circulated to you that shows item by item how much time we are spending on, on each of the deliverables and phases of this approach. But to be clear, But to be clear, a comprehensive Official Plan Amendment is a 12 to 18-month project. It does not happen in the same time period that we would a zoning amendment or an administrative amendment on an official plan. This is a lengthy process. And to be frank, a great deal of the length of review of this is outside of our control, because it does come down to partnership with the county. So what we have done to date is the project charter, the project timeline, a terms of reference for the scope of the comprehensive review, which again, is set by the province of Ontario. The province has made some changes to what that comprehensive review does need to include as part of the more recent 2020 PPS. So in discussions with the county, we are seeking their confirmation of exactly what that scope now needs to include, as opposed to what it would have included under the old PPS. And we are still waiting for confirmation from them on that. But I think it would probably benefit council to see that item-by-item breakdown on the project timeline, so that you can understand how much time and effort is necessary for each phase of this project.
Thank you.
Councilor Holmes here. I'd just like to ask a question. Do we have a timeline for when the appeal of COPA 21 will be clarified?
Through the chair, no. Right now, L-PAD is not sitting. They are not hearing any matters. To date, what we have done is to seek confirmation through our solicitor as to what actions we can undertake at this point. We have taken a more liberal interpretation of what is appealable versus not appealable, and formalized that through an action item to the appellant. We have not received any word back from the appellant yet. So as such, the direction that we received from legal counsel is to proceed as if the majority of the official plan under OPA 21 is in force and effect. That is a, a good sign for us, but we don't have any action or timeline on that final appeal to OPA 21.
So, one more question from Councilor Holmes. And what exactly, if we do not hear back from that client, and, and there's, and, and they're not sitting, L-PAD is not sitting, where does that leave us in terms of what we can actually do?
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify it through the chair. Right now, that leaves us in a position where we are taking the stance that the majority of the plan is in force and effect, unless, whether clarified by the appellant. We have not heard anything yet. We did give 30 days for a response, and we are nearing the end of that now. But ultimately, even if she doesn't respond within 30 days, she could still, she could still choose to challenge it once we get to L-PAD.
Thank you.
Councilor Dowd here again. The CAO Kelly, do you want to get into details in this section today? Or do you want to have this discussion? Or do other councillors want to have more discussion on this at another time?
Like I said, my goal here today was to get a sense of, you, you, we promised that we would bring the project charters back to you. We, we put them together. There's 15 of them in total. You get a sense of the work that has to, has to be done in order to deliver on this strategic plan. And remember, this is, this is council's strategic plan. This is basically what you want to accomplish in your term of office. Where do you want, what's, as you steer the ship, what is it that you want to see happen? And we wanted to make sure that we had the right pieces, and that it was going in the right direction. Do we need to get into the detail of each project charter today? I think the question is, are you comfortable with it going to public consultation as you see it? Or not? If you're not comfortable with it going to public consultation as you see it, and we need to actually do more work on it before it goes to public consultation, then yes, we would come back again, and we could focus on whatever the subject matter is that you're, you're interested in. If you think no, the level of detail that you see here, and for example, in this, in this charter on the Official Plan Amendment, is sufficient to go out to the public, and it's sufficient to go out to the public, and you're comfortable with it. That's, that's basically where we are. If you want to go through the detail again, I can email it out to you. We can have a discussion on it. Like I said, my, my question to you here today is, are you comfortable with what you see here in terms of the direction? Put it out to the public?
Councilor Holmes, again, could I ask a question?
Sure, Councilor.
Once it goes out to the public for consultation, it's going to come back to us again with, with, with those comments and observations, right? Before we, for our final look at, at the projects?
Yes.
So we, we actually have a, an opportunity. My only suggestion would be, I, I think, you know, as you said, you're going to clean it up a bit, because I did notice a few, you know, wrong dates and things, but I'm sure that'll be cleaned up before they go out. And I guess one of my comments would be that, particularly for something like COPA 21, you know, that there would be some, you know, some real, really focused groups who would examine it. And I'm thinking of the, you know, the, the builders and whatnot, that will get a chance to, to, to be able to examine it and give some feedback. Thank you.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it going out, because I like to see the public input out and back as quickly as we can, and obviously there's a date on it. But I agree with Councilor Dowd that, that the OP is such a hot-button item, and it tails so much. And certainly the Director of Planning, you know, did give us an overview. But I would appreciate maybe at the next meeting or something, an expansion of what we had said, because I think it's so important that we get those timeframes, that they can always be adjusted when we get the public input back, so that we have a better appreciation for it.
So, Councilor Ferguson, that was another session or info session just on the status and what the plan is?
Or, or just an expansion of the overview that the Director, just the Director of Planning just gave to us? Is there more, that may generate some more questions that we don't want to drill down onto now?
Okay. Because remember, the strategic plan is not supposed to, in and of itself, I guess, kind of answer, answer the problems or answer the questions. It's identifying your strategic direction in which you want to go. And the particular project charter, once, once we're looking at the outputs, that's, that's the purpose of the strategic plan, is to get us to the outputs. The plan, in and of itself, is not supposed to answer the question. And as we go, as we go through the project charter, that's the process to get you that output. And I think that's where, as we go through each one of those, that's, that's where you're going to get the, the questions answered, like. Again, we're not going to try, we're not going to solve the, solve the, the planning question for the project charter in another session. It's whether, I mean, I'm not hearing that any member of council says it's not a priority. I'm not hearing any member of council saying, it's not something we need to do. It's not something that we can delay. And that's not what the, the strategic plan is basically identifying it as a key, some, a key accomplishment that you need to have happen.
Yes, I agree with that.
Rick Manelli, I'm in favor of getting it out to the public and see what feedback we get from them. I'm going to have one more kick at it, so let's get it out there. What do you think?
Well, I mean, if that question was to me, Deputy Mayor, you know, I, like I said, I would rather have it at the, you know, even at the 80% level, as long as you're comfortable with the direction that we've identified the right things. Things like an economic development plan. The Long-Term Financial Plan is important. The OPA 22 Amendment is important. The Strategic Plan are important. If we, if we've identified all these important components, and you feel that they are the right components, then yes, I would say let's, let's get it out to the public and see if the public agrees, or if there's something that the public picks up on that maybe we've missed. But like I said, I, I would rather go out sooner on that. And it does come back to you. You're not agreeing to the plan and approving it. You're just agreeing to go out with a draft plan to the public for consultation.
Yeah, draft plan to the public. Exactly. Thank you.
Councilor Maiden, I have one more question, I think, for the CAO, through the chair. On each project plan, there's a sign-off. And I was trying to figure, what does that mean? Because it's, we'd have the project lead, the department head, the CAO, and the mayor. And is that to approve these things before they're presented to council? Or what's council's role in that? And, and is this some kind of a veto that the CAO would have, or the mayor, for example?
The purpose of the project charters, again, is to, is really to lock in what we're all talking about. Right, so what we want to do with a project charter is agree from the standpoint that these are the questions we want to answer. The timeline, when it gets delivered, is what we're comfortable with. And, you know, as council and staff and whatnot, we're agreeing that the budget and the resources are what's necessary to get this done. And at the end, this is kind of symbolic, Councilor Maiden, in terms of, the, the project lead is saying, but then if they've scoped the project appropriately, they're comfortable with taking it on, they're comfortable being the champion for this piece of work. And, you know, from the standpoint of mayor and CAO, we're saying, we're, this is what we're asking you to do. So like I said, this is kind of symbolic. But what it does mean is that everybody has agreed that when we get to the end of the road and we deliver the output, that the output is actually what was asked for. If we, if we do step A to Z, when we get to Z, everybody's going to say, okay, that's what we asked you to do. Not that the answer you get is correct, but that that's what we asked you to do. We asked you to do A, B, C, and D, and you've done it? Okay. And so that's what those signatures will mean. It's a symbolic acceptance of the project as we've defined it is what we're asking you to do. Because remember, we're, we're looking at some of these projects that are several months long, if not years long. And sometimes it gets a little bit fuzzy by the time we get to the end, in terms of what the original task was. We want to make sure we have our check-ins along the line, and that it actually fits, right? You know, so nine months or a year down the road, when someone says, here's the plan, they don't get the response of, that's not what you were asked to do. This is a, this is a typical stage in project management, in particular, if you're trying to manage a number of projects that are going to be operating in parallel. Does that answer your question, Councilor Maiden?
I think it answers it as far as the intent goes, yes.
But I mean, you know, at the end of the day, until council says, this is okay, and you've accepted the strategic plan, none of those are going to be signed on. Unless council directs otherwise to say, no, we're not going to delay doing the OPA 22, take it out and get going on it, and we'll work on the strategic plan later, if that's, if that's your desire. But like I said, we're, we're using these to make sure that what you're asking us to do is clear, and when we deliver on it, is what you've asked us to do.
Okay, and then, so before this goes out to the public, you may want to add a little explanation of that, as to what it means and why it's in there, just as you've given us just now.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Councilor.
It's a good idea, Councilor Maiden.
Councilor Dowd again to the CAO. So the plan is then, get this out to the public, get feedback. We're going to meet again, and then discuss content within the charters and the feedback that came through that, is that correct?
Yes, so every, everything will come back to you again, like I said, hoping around the end of August, to have a summary document of what the, you know, what, what the main gist of the comments were on, on the way this, or the direction that's being suggested. And remember, this is council's document. So what people are going to be commenting on is that as a direction for council over the next number of years, this is what makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Holmes, I have another question. The Director of Planning had mentioned that she had given you a, a breakdown of, of what's been happening in, in the COPA 21. Is it possible to distribute it to us, so we'd have a better understanding of how far on it is already?
So you're looking for the GANT chart and a status of the project?
I believe, I believe Nikki said she had given you a breakdown?
Yes, a very detailed breakdown.
Yes.
And remember, what we're trying to do here.
Might be helpful.
Now, one of the things that, trying to keep all these project charters in somewhat, say, the same level of detail, so that one wasn't, looked like it had a lot more work done on it than others. Again, at this stage, just trying to give you enough information such that you can agree in principle on what this is, that wasn't included, because it wasn't done for the other projects to the same level of degree. That project is already in progress, so there's a little more to it than some of the others. It's, it's just the same as the Service Delivery Review Project. That has a much more detailed project plan and a GANT chart for it, because of the level, because of where it is. It's been more planned out, because it's active at this moment.
That's fine.
Mr. Kelly, can I add something?
I believe that's Director Dewar, recommend us the voice?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, there is a GANT chart. And like I said, this is a statutory process. So we thought it was important to itemize the steps in the statutory process, not only to share with council and the public, so that it was clear where we were in the process, but also for the county, because they do play such a large role in reviewing the deliverables for this and granting the approvals. So that was the benefit of the GANT chart in this case. To be clear, we have only just commenced this project, because we have been waiting on the project charter to receive sign-off. So we were authorized to commence, according to the GANT chart, on May 27th by the CAO preemptively to this meeting, because we understood how important it was to proceed with the undertaking. That said, we have not advanced terribly far through the project. And the longer that it takes to receive confirmation from council, the longer it's going to take for us to advance through this project. That's not a threat, but it is a reality. If the scope of our undertaking and additional public consultation is suggested in addition to what has been included in the project charter and the project timeline, that will add time to our end deliverable. So that is probably something that council's going to want to consider. Should you choose to do additional consultation, aside from that which has been outlined in the project charter, or continue to review the project charter, then you need to tell us now, because the work that we're undertaking at this point will need to stop.
Councilor Holmes here. I, I don't think I asked for it to, to prolong the project. You did offer it out, you did say to, at the beginning, that you had prepared it for council. So I thought it might be a reasonable idea, just to take a look, because as CAO Kelly said, you have already commenced the work. Your department has already commenced the work. I think we've all thought of it as a priority project, so I was interested. So I don't see it as holding up the project. I see it as helping council to understand where you are right now. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you, Councilor, or Councilor Holmes. And I appreciate the fact that you And I appreciate the fact that you do want more information to understand how the process will unfold. My concern was more about comments made by previous counselors regarding the addition of public consultation and the addition of stakeholders reviewing the process. That was the point I was making, not directly related to the comments that you just made. Thank you.
Just Cao Kelly, do you want to continue if there's no other comments or questions on this item?
Sure, if anybody has any other things that they would like to, to, to understand or maybe get clarified. Again, we're not trying to, I do want to bring up one point. If, maybe if you're, just from a logistics standpoint, if you are, if you don't intend to speak and you can put yourself on mute, that would be helpful because I understand that there's some noise or some background noise that people are getting. But again, what we're trying to do here is we're not trying to solve each project charter before we get going here. What you're trying to do is say, that project is a priority and we want it to, we want it to proceed, and we've identified it as a priority for council. It's not that we're trying to get to the answer on that project in this process of a strategic plan. The gist here is what we're trying to do is, at a high level, is this where the organization needs to go on all of these fronts in the next three years? If, if what you're telling us is the priority is OPA 22 and none of these other things are the priority, or a priority, then what we should be doing is saying, all resources should be dedicated towards OPA 22 in the organization and we, we won't be tackling those other projects. Now, those other projects feed into the long-term financial plan and also the direction that we'll be taking on those assets. So for instance, if it's a transportation master plan or if it's the IT, you know, the digitalization strategy, the IT plan. Those are things that we're looking to say is, are these the things that we need to do? And remember, this, this came out of the ideas and concepts and issues that were arranged, that you raised originally of, you know, they, they covered a very broad spectrum of things. And we've worked to bring them, you know, in under some, some structure. And your, what you've been pointing out is in lots of times similar to the thought process of, of staff as well. And I, I think, you know, we have good alignment between what you're suggesting as the priorities and what staff has as its priorities. I think it's worked out pretty good. But if, if one seems to be a higher priority than another, then that's where we should be putting our efforts.
The Cao and the Director have stated, but one of the common threads that always comes back when we're discussing this is the question, and I think it'll probably come from the public as well, how much do we want to grow and when? And do we have to wait until 2022 to find that out or longer? Or will that question be answered sooner than that?
Through the chair, this is Director DeWier. Counselor Ferguson, we've, you've raised this point before. And, and we've talked about the coordination of planning between the upper tier and the lower tier. We do, we do not, as the lower tier, have the authority to decide what our total population projection is. That is determined by the county. So we were allocated last year, a little over 21,000 people within the next 20 years. It is within the purview of this council to decide where we will allocate those people. It is not a guarantee that our population will grow that quickly, but it is the metric that we use to determine where growth is going to occur. Now, our existing OP does talk about the fact that we have a 70-30 split in development between urban on-service development and rural off-service development. And this is something that this council elected to change from the last OP, from the 50-30-20 split. So working under that principle, we can decide where we are going to put 70% of the population in Elmont Ward and where we are going to locate 30% of the increased growth in the rural ward. But determining how much that ultimate population increase is, is not within our purview.
And I respect that, but is it open for discussion and with the county? I assume that the residents would have some or would appreciate having some say in that.
Through the chair, just like when the local municipality undertakes an official plan amendment, the county must follow the same statutory process. So the time for residents of Mississippi Mills to provide their feedback to the county on that gross population increase to 21,000 was last year when the county undertook their official plan amendment. Okay? Now, I can tell you that in the lead up to their official plan amendment, they did come to each municipality to talk to the heads of council and the county council rep at that time, because we didn't have a deputy mayor, to confirm that council was supportive in general of that population. I believe there was also a resolution from council supporting the population allocation that the county had projected. That piece I can confirm.
Okay, no? Good reminder and good, thank you for that answer.
Just by the way, Counselor Ferguson, the, the short timetable that's included in the project charter that was in the strategic plan, which is a summary of the larger one, had options for growth strategies in the fall of 2020. And that's basically when that's going to happen. It is detailed in the project charter, the public consultation component that's in there. It leaves bullet three on page 19 of the strategic plan file. And options for growth is bullet two. And it says, council will be provided with two reports, overview of findings of the comprehensive review and options for proposed growth scenarios, three to six options. And it says, the deliverable there, council to pass a resolution accepting the findings of the comp review and directing staff to undertake public consultation with proposed growth scenarios. So that, to my understanding, is targeted for the fall of 2020 for those. That's, that's articulated in the project charter.
Great, no, appreciate, thank you.
So are there, are there issues or questions or directions from, from others? Because I guess going back to Chair, Counselor Daugherty's question of kind of how we wanted to proceed, I did hear from, I guess, four counselors that, you know, three counselors, that they were okay with this proceeding at some point in time out to public consultation. So I'm just wondering, is there, is there more, more questions that people have about what's in the document, the process or how it's going to unfold? Or are you ready to kind of, to give the green light for public consultation on the strategic plan? Not public consultation on, on OPA 22, but on the strategic plan?
Do you want a motion?
Uh, yes, Counselor Ferguson, it's.
I would move that it go to public consultation.
I'll second. Rick Minnelli.
Okay, Counselor Daugherty, I'll go to the vote then. Counselor Ferguson? Yes, I know. Counselor Dryard?
Great, I had done mute. I had done mute, I'm sorry. Yes, that's fine.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Counselor Maiden? Counselor Maiden, are you there?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Minnelli?
Yes.
Yes, carried. Back to you, Cao Kelly.
Well, I, I think that basically is, answers the question that we wanted answered from you today, which was, do you want to go to public consultation? So I think we're there. As I said, we are going to do some further refinements about this. What I'd like to do is do that, do those refinements and then send that out to you as a document still in draft and see if there's any final kind of one-off things that people are pointing out. Make sure, again, we dotted the i's and crossed the t's sufficiently. And then we'll put it out to public consultation, which is going to be, as I mentioned, we'll publish it on our web. We'll be sending out, you know, invites on Facebook, on the news feed and whatnot for people to view that document. And we'll have hard copies here if somebody wants to stop in or get a copy from the municipal office so that they can either email us or write us with comments, and we'll have directions on that. And I will take, you know, Counselor Maiden did say do some further explanation on project charters and the purpose of them. The breakdown or the further GANT and the current status of OPA 22 should be circulated with council as well. We'll take those away as action items as well. Counselor Daugherty, I'll turn it back over to you, sir. I think I'm done.
Okay, is there anything else from members of council?
Counselor Maiden here. I would, I would just ask that, with the support of the rest of council, that emails go out to all our committee members when this is published so that they kind of get a special invitation to comment? I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you, Counselor Maiden.
Anybody else? Can I get a mover and secondor for adjournment, please?
I'll move.
Holmes will second.
All in favor, Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Counselor Dryard? Counselor Dryard?
Yes.
Counselor Holmes?
Yes.
Mayor Lowry?
Yes.
Counselor Maiden?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Minnelli?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.
Bye. Thanks, Don.